This town meeting will be officially called to order. And I thank everyone for being present, however you may be present. And the second item on the agenda... I'm on the wrong agenda, that's the Thursday. I'm looking for Tuesday's agenda. Hold on. Okay, we're supposed to start off with an invocation first tonight. So if you would, let's bow our heads for just a short moment of silence. Thank you very much. We will officially call tonight's meeting, Tuesday night's regular monthly meeting, to order. Welcome all of you again, however you are present. And we shall stand now. Item number three on the agenda, pledge allegiance to the flag to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to remind all the commissioners and staff to please speak into the microphone so that everyone can hear clearly. And item number four on the agenda is a consideration of approving the agenda as presented. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Mr. Sullivan made the motion.
Second.
Mr. Brown, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's passed unanimously. Number five on the agenda, approval or consideration of approval of the minutes for the March 11 and March 17 meetings. Is there a motion to approve both sets of minutes?
Make a motion, we approve both sets of minutes.
In a second.
All right. Mr. Tyner made the mo... Mr. Brown made the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Prove say no. She unanimously approved both sets. Number six, public comments on the agenda. General items. Madam Clerk, did you have anything you need to tell us?
We received three comments from the public. I could either read them or post them to the website. I could either read the comments for you or I could post them to the website and let you know who they are.
What's the pleasure of the board? I think a few of them are kind of long-winded. I think you should post them to the website.
I, after the last meeting, a number of... This is Mike Sullivan. They complained about not knowing who was speaking last time too. So this is Mike Sullivan. Last time, we didn't read them in and people were hoping that we would. And if the person was here, we would let them speak and it would be in the record. So I think we should read it, it wouldn't take that long. One of them is very long, we can post that to the website. But the other two are going to take more than a minute at least.
May I make a suggestion? If it's okay with the board, they're allowed three minutes to speak, right? So I would, if you want it read, I would give them the normal three minutes. And then whatever's left, the whole thing could be on the...
Okay, that's fair.
On the website. Is that all right with everybody?
Sure.
All right, Madam Clerk. You have three.
Who's getting time? Me? I usually do. First two are short. Okay. The first one is from Pat Cruz. It is time to open the beaches now to residents and visitors. The cure has become worse than the disease. New Hanover County has seen a 116% increase in domestic violence calls cases year over year. I can only imagine what the statistic is for Brentwood County. And then we have one from Dean Thomas, from Dean Thomas and his wife Tracy. Many thanks to Mayor Holden for opening the beach back up for exercise and fresh air for the residents and homeowners. It's very much appreciated. Also sincere thanks to the town staff, commissioners, and the mayor for keeping the ship sailing while the town is under the restrictions of the coronavirus lockdown. Okay, this one is from Irving Woods. First, thanks for reopening the beach strand. Just afternoon on my end of the beach, I saw a good many people on the strand, hint of demand, mostly one or two people together with plenty of space between each group. By 3:00 PM, when I took a two-mile walk, I encountered five people and we never got closer than 50 feet apart. The wind was strong, but it felt great walking on the beach again instead of sidewalks and streets. While not a registered voter nor permanent resident yet, I believe that I and many other off-islander owners are part of the fabric of this community. I've served on the nonprofit Holden Beach Renourishment Committee, which is chaired by a non-resident. Many of us have owned property and enjoyed Holden Beach longer than many voting residents and probably some elected officials. When I've spoken at town commission meetings, I've often used the phrase, "one beach, one island, one community," when discussing issues including my support of the very expensive Central Reach project, which cost us all in higher taxes, yet didn't include the East End. The town has been very helpful to my end of the beach and we, the taxpayers, have been very fortunate to often have piggyback funding with federal, state, and county resources to both keep the water quality and then open to boaters and pump sand on the East End. Many local residents, voters, are retirees or who are on fixed income. I'm retired too, and part of my income is fixed, which is very nice. The larger part of my income is from the substantial investment I have in two beach houses here, which normally rent very well. So well, in fact, that they usually generate about twice as much occupancy taxes annually to the town coffers as my real estate taxes. For me, I'm helping my daughter in Virginia, who is out of work for the first time in 10 years due to a restaurant closure. While my wife's cattle farm is unable to sell beef cattle, she normally sells each spring. I've already lost about $10,000 from COVID cancellations from late March through April. I can handle that. If I'm unable to rent in May, the loss is over $15,000, which jumps to about $35,000 per month if it rolls into the summer months. That would be devastating to my family and many others. I know a lot of owners of houses which were bought with the intention of using some of the time while renting to cover much of the mortgage, tax, flood, and wind policy expenses at the beach and hopefully transitioning to a retirement here. One of my neighbors has recently lost a mid-upper level management job with no assurances of getting it back. This is his first time considering whether to file for unemployment after 30-plus years of work. His family now really needs the rental income. When the real estate market crashed in 2006 to 2010, or later timeframe, I had one house here which I still have. Unfortunately, I overpaid by near the top of the market. While the value dropped about 40%, I did not have to sell because rentals stayed relatively strong and I was able to manage the cash flow. The similar house next door had to sell because the owner was over-leveraged. Can I skip to the last sentence, which is?
Sure.
Please allow short-term rentals to resume my may first. But I will post the whole thing on.
All right. Any more public comments of any form? Hearing none, we'll move to item number seven on the agenda, quarterly financial update. Mr. Hewitt?
Yes, sir. The budget report we had requested, of course, would have been the end of the third quarter. But what I've done in this report is to go ahead and include two more weeks in it after the 13th, because we, that is the date on which we have made our final debt service payments for the entire year. So all the big-ticket items have been paid as of the 13th of April, plus it's still further in the year. So your report tonight, I'll just be going over some of the highlights in the four operation funds, the general fund, the water and sewer fund, the beach, parks, access, recreation, and tourism fund, and the canal dredging. As I've said before, the big-ticket items, all of our debt services are paid. That's $3.54 billion across all funds is the, and I've got this up in a follow-up slot here. And what the highlights of the slide will show is that we are in the black for this point in time in the year, once we make our fund balance appropriations and account for our inter-fund transfers. The capital and debt service paid, they're listed here. The town hall is paid for, the emergency center, the BB and T sewer line, which is that portion of the sewer system, it's the collection system, it's not the joint system or the portion of the county sewer system. That collection line, the town's collection lines for the BB and T sewer lines, that debt was retired this year. So that'll be $660,000 of debt service that we won't have to pay in the upcoming budget year. The county sewer debt for our capital facilities, for our regional sewer system, that has also been paid, as has the special obligation bond debt service. So again, that's those, all of those capital debts have been paid in an amount of $3.54 A few of the highlights, I don't know what's going to happen the rest of the year, but our property tax collections are over 98%. Accommodation tax are above 97%. Interest earnings are strong at $145,000 that's spread across all of our funds and our reserves. The state distributed revenues, all of those are on, ahead of schedule. And I do want to point out that all of the building inspections revenues, which indicates a strong construction component here at Holden Beach are ahead of schedule. When I say ahead of schedule, they're above what we budgeted for, or on track at this point in time, which is nine miles into the year. Yes, sir?
David's Woody. The accommodations tax collections, that's, are you saying you've collected 97% of what we projected we would get this year?
Yes, sir. So this slide is not as bad an ITIS slide as sometimes in the past. And I'll just take a brief minute to explain the way it's set up. Our funds are in the first column, and I've got a revenue and expense line for each one of those. So for example, the general fund, your budget numbers, of course, have got to match your expense, because your revenues have the equal expense. And then the actual, which is the third column, that's your actual pleasure and conferences. Now for revenues, it's just going to be the actual revenues that has come in as of April the 13th. On the expense side, those are the actual expenses that you've made, and it's also the promissories that you have encumbered the funds with. So we take that money aside. And the delta column is how far you are ahead or behind in each category of revenue or expense. So for example, in the general fund, we've collected all but $116,000. And on the expense side, in the general fund, we haven't spent $1.3 million. So when we compare that on a cash basis, the revenues actually collected, lest the expenses actually made or promised in the general fund, we're in the positive, $1.3 million. Now, when you go to the sewer fund, and also in the BPAR fund, you're going to see some red numbers jump out at you. And that's because we have large capital projects that we have encumbered the expense for them, but we've also appropriated fund balance. And fund balance is not brought into the picture until you get to the end of the year. So when you look at the water and sewer fund, it looks like we're in the red, $2.3 million. But that is specifically attributable to, for example, our sewer lift station is underway down there. So when we, at the end of the year, everything else holding a steady course, when we actually true up and set the appropriated funds against the expense at this point in time, we're almost a quarter million dollars ahead in the water and sewer fund. Likewise, for the BPAR fund, because we've done some dredging there, and primarily in the BPAR fund, those are big numbers. That's $27 million, and that's FEMA. But we're not into that pie yet. So our revenues and expenses in the BPAR fund are strictly our collections, mostly and some small grants that we've had. And then on the expense side, where we have paid for some dredging, but we haven't gotten to the end of the year where we'll actually appropriate or put the fund balance appropriations on the table. If you take those into consideration, we're almost a half a million dollars ahead in the BPAR fund. That's good. And all of our funds, we're in the black once you take those end-of-year transactions into consideration. Likewise, for the canal dredging project, it has right at about $2 million of funds, because we haven't done a project issue, we've just done a normal make, that's kind of thing there. So are there any questions on those funds there? I don't know what's going to happen for the rest of the year, but after right now, this quarter, three-quarters of the year, is good.
And David, make sure I understood you correctly. You said on BPAR, that's where the FEMA money's going?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That is $24 billion.
Yeah.
So David, on the general fund, do we, you know, the figures are, we've actually used 59% of the budget. Is that normally how the budget works in the last quarter? Will we actually use 40% of the budget?
It depends. It depends. I haven't gone back and checked to see what we look like historically on expenses, but you have to remember, we have some debt services that have been paid. So the 59%, that's 60%. You know, the 15%, is that a consequence of, you know, the Dorian expenses that we've had? I don't know. But I can tease that data out for you.
I mean, the way it looks now, we're going to have almost a million dollars more in revenue than we have in the expenses from the general fund at the end of the year?
No. What it is, is that $900,000, that's going to trickle down to zero. We're $900,000 ahead now, but as we go into the last three months, our expenses will be, will be eating into that.
I guess that was my question.
Yeah, it will end up at zero. And for those, in those situations where we do have a fund balance appropriation, the net effect, if we come in under budget, like on our sewer lift station, we want to appropriate the whole thing, we want it to end up at zero. That's how we balance it. So I went through just some, you know, some basic highlights of the budget in our four operational funds. Right now, I believe that we're in good shape. If you're interested in actually getting into the whole hundred, almost 200 specific line items, I want to remind the audience and the board that we post the monthly budget actual on our website every month. It's the last day of the month. Sometimes it takes a couple, three days before we actually, it falls on a weekend before we post it, but every month it's posted to the website. And that's the quarterly budget actual. Y'all have any questions?
To make a couple observations and make sure, if you would, check me on these. On the general fund, the majority of your revenue is after all our taxes. Is that correct? And other fees?
That is correct.
All right. So you've already collected the probably majority of taxes you're going to collect this year?
That comes in, you know, December, January, it comes in like a warm milk through the snake.
Yep.
It just comes in at one piece of love.
So the point Mike was making earlier, your revenues are probably going to slow up for the next quarter, but your expenses will continue.
Yeah.
So you'll probably come out close to zero, or net to zero.
Right.
All right.
In any excess, of course, will fall into undesigned fund balance.
Yep. And then water and sewer, we might have a hit on for the coming quarter because of the lack of rentals. Do you agree with that?
I agree with that.
Okay.
However, just like in the occupancy tax, we've collected 90%, 97% of that, of course, there's a direct correlation between those collections taking place in July, August, and September of last year, big rental months, that's big water consumption.
Okay.
So we have collected the majority of the water revenues to...
That's good boy.
That's not to say that we weren't, you know, we wouldn't have used a whole bunch of that Memorial Day, but pretty much water consumption tracks to the occupancy tax collections in the middle season.
And I see you in mid-eastern, not Memorial Day.
Well, eastern and Memorial Day.
Okay.
It ramps up throughout the age, and once schools get out, which...
I'm good. Thank you. Any more questions, Mr. Hewitt? Are we ready to move to the next item on the agenda? Number eight, the generator. Mr. Hewitt?
Yes, sir. You've got a memo included in your agenda package, and Mr. Evans has actually ghost-written the, well, he's actually signed it, but has actually been the point man on running the details to earth force on that. I'd like to turn that over to him and let him go through that if I may.
Sure. Mr. Evans?
I'm not sure if I'm thoroughly going to go through it, but if you want me to, I'll just reiterate that on, I guess, on the March meeting, regular meeting, y'all asked staff to look into, or gave us a tasker on whether or not the town should be considered a critical facility, whether or not we needed to have a generator and have it attached to the structure, and whether or not the generator that was out there was sufficient size or too large. We took the tasker in as it came to us, and we broke it down. First of all, let me say that we took our time. We talked to, as it says in the letter, we talked to several engineering companies. I talked to several generator companies as well. The engineers were pretty much in lockstep with the information that they had. I then also engaged in the Department of Insurance to make sure that my assessment of where I should stand as far as the most common building code and as far as as a level three fire inspector and fire marshal, in giving y'all the proper information. And as the letter states, I can go through the taskers, if y'all want me to, one by one, if that's what you like, or I can wrap it up pretty quickly by telling y'all that this should be a critical facility, it states it in the letter. It explains to you why it should be a critical facility. And it goes to the heart of what the most common building code requires. It goes to the life safety measures within the town, and it also goes to what the town historically has decided to do with the building, even from its inception, when it was originally designed, what they decided it would be used for. There are some state guidelines that leave me with the decision that I have to make as to whether or not it needs to be attached to the building, it has to be permanent. Those guidelines are clear, it does. There are state guidelines that are, that direct us as to whether we need it or not, and yes, we do. And if you read the letter, it's pretty straightforward. The information is all there. The biggest thing, I think, is that once we get past that, is that it would appear from all the technical data that we have, and the research that was done, and from the engineers that we associated with, that the original generator was sized almost at 100% larger than it needed to be. It was at 292 kW a week, and what we really needed in terms of what we have is more along the line of 150. And so we've included that, we even had an engineer doing analysis on it. But that analysis also mirrored what the other engineer, the conversation that I had with them, and also mirrored, I know that I had a conversation with at least one generator company, and then I know that another generator company was also engaged. And both of them had already stated that their assessment of the building was the same. I think the biggest thing that we have here that y'all need to think about is, is that the structure itself, when it was originally designed, it was designed with the outside shell accommodating 100% of the power source and the main feeds. And there are numerous panels inside this building, a lot of panels. And to try to isolate them just for the life safety and to ignore the critical facility component, or the critical operations portion of it that would be required to the NEC, would be not, would not be cost-effective. That also was reiterated and backed up by the engineers through conversation. And I would tell you that from looking at the structure and knowing what it would take in order to isolate those panels, it's not going to be cost-effective. Your best course of action, or my recommendation would be, to get a generator at 150 kW, and if we can, either rebuild or reuse the switching gear that's on the outside and refit the building 100%, keep it critical facility. You're getting points right now on the CRS because we designated it in the hundred mitigation all the way back to 2009 as a critical facility. So they're picking up points, obviously, using the CRS as well. So glad to answer any questions.
But there's a large difference in the cost, or a pretty substantial difference in cost, from like 150 to 200 and something. Roughly, how many dollars are we looking at?
For less than $100,000 is what our informal solicitation tells us. That's turnkey and includes replacement, that transfer switch out.
Okay. And also, the...
Which is probably half of what...
What the other one was.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And also, this, the newer one we're looking at, is one that's going to have the soundproof?
The sound attenuation around the building.
Yes. Okay. And that would...
And some other moisturifying components in it.
Components. Okay. Now, also, like, I know I've heard this been brought up a time or two about when it's actually ran, like during the day or something. Is there some way that that can be offset, where we can set it up at night or later in the day, or something like that, so as not to interfere with other things?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I'm not, I mean, this is pretty logical. Would you not think?
Yeah. It can be set up to have its test run period if you want to do it regularly, like weekly.
Yeah.
It can be set up to be running anytime. You can set that period at any time. It doesn't have to be during the day.
Okay. And Al Fulford, I mean, you know, this is two different things, air conditioners and generators. And I know it sounds a little crazy, but they will all tell you the best thing in the world for anything to keep it from rust is fresh water.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And I was just wondering if we could do something as far as, you know, where we can, you know, give it good maintenance? Because, you know, I mean, we're saving good money here to begin with, and if we can extend the life of it even more, you see what I'm saying? Does that not make sense?
Put a sprinkler system over it.
Yeah.
Lack of a better phrase.
Yeah, lack of a better phrase. Just have something where we can have some fresh water on it every 30 days.
We're going to have to do a better job maintaining that. We're gonna have to do a better job maintaining that generator and that match.
Yeah, and if we can do that, that's the main thing because that, that'll be the life of it.
And I think that one of the engineers, if not both of them, have told me that, that there's actually some other components in these, in these generators they're talking about that will make them more weather resistant. But, you know, a regular maintenance system of some type of pressure will probably be the best. But they've come a long way with coastal equipment now, especially in the last ten years.
Yeah.
Yeah, they can, they can produce some coastal equipment now, put some paid dollar, make some blast on.
They put a coating, I mean, it's just like with air conditioners, you know? They'll put a coating on that now that it can extend, it'll extend that life pretty good on the unit, you know? I mean, and, and, you know, it's just, you know, we wanna try, we just wanna get the most out of it we can get, you know?
David, is, I assume there's some cost that's separate for removing this generator and getting rid of it?
Those, uh, those informal solicitations included a turnkey setup, remove the other one, and walk away, turn the switch on and.
She's good to go.
Did they offer any salvage value for the one that's out there now?
Didn't get into that with them, I did not.
So we don't have any formal bids as of this minute?
I, I have the informal solicitations that we have. And what I would recommend to the board is that by consensus, that you allow me to proceed with procuring it because you've already made the budget appropriations. And what we wanna make sure that we do is that we follow the, uh, proper contracting procedures and make sure that everything is above board, um, and, and so we can move forward. I'm worried that, um, there's a twelve week lead time on, on getting the equipment in place. Um, after, up to a twelve week lead time, after we get final specs from the, um, a design in, the final check, um, to make sure that we get the right things. And, uh, twelve weeks puts us into August, almost, you know, August. So that's six weeks in the hurricane season. And, um, you know, we, we had a power outage the other day, which, you know, knocked us offline. And everything that we're doing, we're pushing services out digitally, you know? We rely on, on the power to do that. So going into hurricane season and not having this thing lash down tight is a concern.
Tim, you one hundred percent satisfied with these recommendations, can you support them?
Oh, yeah, I, I do support them one percent. I, I don't really support them, I'm sitting here telling you that right now, you've, you've got a temporary backup generator running your life safety systems in a building that the building code doesn't allow that to work. It's supposed to be permanently attached right now. So we're right now operating under a, 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 get out of jail guard, so to speak, because I'm sitting here, you know what I mean? So I, I'm just saying that that's a, that could be an issue.
And that's, that, that is being procured for ten more weeks, so it takes twelve weeks to get here, so.
So, so do we have, do we have to send out for bids?
I can do it informally, I can so, I can solicit those by.
How many different places we go with?
We need to do three.
Okay.
Can you include maintenance agreements in that, those figures too?
In, in those informal solicitations, we've got those also in there. And so that's why that, um, that hundred thousand dollar, uh, I put that in there, that includes, you know, like for a year's worth, it includes the, uh, twice a year full load testing. It includes, you know, scrubbing the fuel, it includes all of those things that you should be doing on, on a hard maintenance level type.
Can you also ask them maybe to include warranties, availability of extended warranties?
Absolutely.
Things of that nature, so maybe we can get on down the road with this thing. Obviously, we weren't, who was taking care of the one we are, we had out there?
Whoever walked by and noticed that there was rust coming up on it, I could tell you that nobody.
Nobody.
The only water that went in it was rainwater.
So, nobody.
No one. And, you know, this, this building was constructed and, um, you know, without any given thought to how it was gonna be taken care of, it's fourteen thousand square feet of building. And there were no, um, considerations given to a formal maintenance plan. ID, they should have had a building engineer, um, that came along with the maintenance on it. Um, you know, that's, that's me here and there, but, uh, you know, fourteen thousand square feet of building is a long building. You know, just to ask public works to keep the walls changed in when you're digging with high power systems. Fifteen air conditioners, right on.
I just don't wanna buy another one ten years from now. I think we can do better than that, so it's a lot of money. I'm glad to see that it's a lot less money now than it was gonna be, but we need to take care of it. I think it needs to be quiet so we don't need to relocate it and, um, serve the purpose.
One of the follow-on things that I wanna do is that as part of the, you know, we just did the solicitation. It's one thing to, to, um, to get a promise on what it would do, but we wanna do some field visits to see what it, you know, what, where there's one light that we've been told will work and what it sounds like and that kind of stuff.
Gotcha, and, and after, uh, excuse me, after you do the informal solicitation, will you put the three, we'll get bids hopefully from three companies? And then will you present those bids with the contract to us to make the determination?
I, I would ask the board for you by consensus to tell me to do that on my part.
To make the decision?
Well, it, it's, it's pretty much straightforward when you, when you have three bids and you can go through, um, the cost and the, and the manufacturer on it. When you got three big, you got three major ones.
The state law allows you to do that?
The board can delegate the contracting authority.
I just think it'd be good practice, I mean, if we could see it, I'd like to see the cost on it.
Just, just that time is important here.
Time's important, no, you need one phone call, call me, I'll come, okay? But I ju, I feel, I feel like when we're spending that kinda money, we, we all, and we should.
We need to look at it.
We're spending town funds, so let's all get a look at it and see we're getting apple for apple and everything, and let's go from there. Agreed?
That's why I asked that question.
There you go.
Look at the contract.
It's no different than a paving contract or anything else. We, I wanna see it.
Okay, alright.
I spend a lot of time on it, I wanna see it.
Okay. Everybody happy?
Ready to move on?
Okay.
Alright, we're on number nine, Ms. Ferguson?
Yes, sir, good evening. This is a, um, three-part budget amendment. The first part is to recognize funds that were overtime funds that were expended during Dorian, um, that would be coming back into the budget. And then the second parts are for CAT G management costs for Florence and Michael. We get up to, up to five percent of the total of those PWs. Um, and that will require monthly supplemental reports. Um, that includes our CAT G, but also the other categories for those forms from Florence and Michael. And the suggested motion is at the bottom of the memo.
Any motions?
I make a motion, we accept it.
Second. Mr. Sullivan made the motion, Mr. Tanner seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, it's unanimously passed. Number ten, Ms. Ferguson?
Yes, sir, in the theme world, the COVID nineteen pandemic has looked at much like a hurricane. So in order for us to, um, submit paperwork and apply for reimbursement, you guys would need to designate an applicant's agent. So the form is attached and the suggested motion has Town Manager Hewitt as the primary agent and myself as the secondary agent.
A motion, anywhere? I make a motion, we accept this recommendation naming Town Manager's primary agent and Assistant Town Manager's secondary agent.
A second.
Okay, Mr. Tanner made it and Mr. Brown seconded, any discussion?
I'll just, uh, I have a couple of questions. Did, have we incurred any expenses for COVID?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and one other question for that, have we applied to the state or the county for any PPE?
Yes, and we received as much as they could give us, which did not include masks. We received hand sanitizer and gloves is all that been able to provide us.
So have we purchased any PPE?
We cannot, we can't find any. The, uh, supply chain is such that, and Brunswick County is having problems with it too. Um, you get promised that there are masks available, but they, it, it, uh, they want the money upfront without, um, and what we've seen is some horror stories from people fronting it, and then, well, they're on a, on a, on a boat coming from China.
Ready to vote?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no, again, it's unanimously approved. Number eleven, Ms. Fennel?
The Family First, um, Coronavirus Act allows employers to exclude employees who are emergency responders from the leave requirements under the act. Based on the guidelines, um, we're recommending that the police department, public works department, the inspections director, manager, clerk, and assistant manager all be deemed as emergency responders. Um, the first act is the Emergency Family and Medical Leave Expansion Act. And basically what that does is if you need to be out in order to take care of your child, then, um, you're able to do that under the new act. So we would like to have employees that are deemed as emergency responders be ex- excluded from that part of the act. And then there's also the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act. And that makes an employee entitled to take the related to COVID nineteen if the employee is unable to work, including telework because of the following reasons. The first one is that the employee is subject to a federal, state, or local quarantine or isolation order related to COVID nineteen. The second is that the employee has been advised by the healthcare provider to self-quarantine because they are infected with or have been exposed to COVID nineteen or because they are at high risk of complications. The third is that the employee is showing symptoms of COVID nineteen and is seeking but has not yet received a medical diagnosis. The fourth is the employee is caring for someone subject to a federal, state, or local quarantine or isolation order related to COVID. The fifth is the employee is caring for his or her son or daughter because the child's school or childcare facility has been closed. And the sixth is that the employee is experiencing any other substantially similar condition. Um, we have determined that employees deemed emergency responders should be excluded from provisions one, four, and five. So basically what that would do is the employees who are emergency responders, if they're sick with COVID or have to self-quarantine, still will get paid. But basically the childcare, uh, aspect of it, it would exclude the emergency responders from it. So we've gotten there that we would like you to ratify our decisions. And the decisions are the police department, public works department, inspections director, manager, town clerk, and assistant town manager are deemed emergency responders. Employees deemed emergency responders are excluded for the new qualifying reason in the Emergency Family and Medical Leave Expansion Act. And employees deemed emergency responders are excluded from provisions one, four, and five of the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act.
Any motion?
I make a motion that we accept the recommendation.
Mr. Sullivan moves to accept, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, anyone?
Yeah, yes, I'd like to make a little discussion. The motion that we're gonna vote on, uh, first, I wanna commend the, the town staff for digging into this. This is not, it's not easy reading and it's not easy to understand. And secondly, I wanna commend them for actually limiting the potential benefit that they would get from this bill. They could sit back and they could get another twelve weeks of paid leave if they didn't make this. So they're making a suggestion that ad- actually adversely impacts them potentially. And I wanna commend them for doing that.
Okay, anyone else? Any more discussion? Alright, call the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, unanimously passed. Town managers support Mr. Hewitt?
My apologies for neglecting, distribute that at the beginning of the meeting. He goes without saying that the inlet hazard areas that we worked on, um, back in the cold weather, that that's been tabled for the time being, the CRC's April meeting has been canceled. And, uh, the June meeting is to be determined, but we've still got our eye on that one. We're not gonna let, um, uh, that one get by us. Personnel wise, um, our vacant police officer's position that was created by John Duncan's resignation has been filled, uh, by Brandon Dozier. It was a, a, a fortuitous circumstances. Brandon was, uh, previously employed with us as a regular officer and had, uh, was on our reserve force, um, and he is now working with us full-time. The vacant fiscal analyst position has been filled by Mr. Daniel McRaney. Mr. McRaney is a, uh, local product from West Brunswick High School. Uh, graduated last year from Wingate University with a B.S. in accounting and is a couple of courses shy of obtaining his master's in accounting degree. Uh, right now, he's working three days a week, part-time until August the first, and then he'll move over into full-time. His master's de- degree, uh, the last couple of courses and the ones he's, um, in now allow for a type of work-study program. Since he's home from school, there's again a fortuitous circumstances that allows him to come to work for us while he's obtaining the, the ending on his, uh, master's degree in accounting. The audit for the fiscal year ending thirty June is underway, we're working hard on that. And as, um, as we're trying to wrap up and finish up this budget year, or the audit for this year, we've gotta get ready for the, for the upcoming year. So the department heads have submitted their request to me. We've got our worksheets roughed in and, um, we're just gonna have to get together later on in the week in order to figure out what our process is gonna be. We're gonna have to have a pretty big process, whereas in the past, we've had five, six, seven meetings. That's, that's just not going to get, we're being accommodated. I don't think, um, that y'all are willing to want to do that, you may, but it's gonna be mighty hard over the, over the next year. The Station Three status, uh, drove by today, looks like the columns are formed up. Uh, we're talking with public works, they're gonna be poured this week and appear to be on schedule for that, uh, completion in December of that project. Brunswick Avenue paving, uh, looks like VNT has, is going to have some, uh, impact with their paving projects, um, but suffice it to say that our contractor, um, is anticipating site visit tomorrow here with a twenty-seven April start. We're still on schedule to do it between Easter and Memorial Day. So that's, that's what we wanna have happen every year when we do that kind of thing. The Lockwood Falls inlet crossing navigation project, maintenance project, that project is finished now and the vegetation and sand fence repair should have started today. Y'all seen some, um, trucks on the beach, they're either the vegetation, the sand fence contractor or the, uh, east coast engineering which has started. or the, uh, East Coast engineering, which has started the annual beach survey monitoring. Uh, they'll, they'll be on the beach probably through the end of this week. Which, uh, leads me to point out these two survey vessels are out here. That's part of our central, uh, reach sand search. The bad weather, we just had bad weather and, uh, acid got following and are gonna be here for a couple of days. We've submitted a hundred thousand dollar grant to the Coastal Storm Damage Mitigation Fund, uh, for sand fencing Bay Station. We are now on our eighth FEMA program manager for FEMA Dorian. Um, we are still awaiting approval of our project worksheets for that almost fifteen million dollars. So the twenty-four million dollars for Florence and Michael coupled with the, uh, with the Dorian, when those come together, the idea is to try to do them all as one project so we can avoid, uh, large-scale legalization, legalization costs and save everybody some money. As I have previously provided to the board, the special obligation bond, uh, vehicle that, that we actually have used for our central reach project funding mechanism, that enabling legislation was removed, we believe, in a government in the last session of the, uh, of the General Assembly's convention. And as I understand it, uh, there are efforts to reinstitute that capability for local governments to use it now when the General Assembly takes back. And we are, um, that's a very important thing for us. We want it, we need it, we will, uh, do our thing again to make sure we push that up. And, um, finally, I just want to note that we're back to five FEMA projects going on. We've got four hurricanes and a COVID-19. It's, um, it's, it's ongoing every day, uh, administrative effort to keep all these FEMA projects straight. Christie is probably the most, um, versed in how to use the federal grants portal of, uh, of anybody around. And, uh, we're, we're holding our own there, but other than that, that's, that's all I know.
Any questions?
Dana, remind me again, how much money do we still have outstanding for the FEMA projects? I'm sorry, remind me again how much money we have outstanding for all the FEMA projects?
It's twenty-four million dollars, which is Florence and Michael together. There's a split on, and then with Dorian, that's right at another fourteen, fifteen million dollars. So totally, total collected, it's right in the forty million dollar range on, on the project.
Which makes it very important that Christie works on that stuff. Yep. Only other comment I had was, I'd have had a couple residents ask if there's anything TA Levin could do about parking their trucks off the sidewalk.
We'll, we'll, we'll look at it.
All right.
We'll remind them as to proper, because they've got a whole area down there to, on it, and we will make them some more areas nearby.
Not making any judgments, just saying a couple residents have mentioned that.
Fair requests. Goose in the gander, yeah. Any more questions or?
Any more comments?
Okay, we'll move to the mayor's comments. I'd like to thank the citizenry and the residents and the staff commissioners and all of us have had experiences in the last few weeks that we have never been through before. Overall, the camaraderie and ability to survive and work together has been, uh, far better than it could have. Uh, it's disappointing to see those that try to sneak around and do things that they know they shouldn't be doing and point fingers and so forth. But they're so much more, uh, good than bad. And, uh, today at twelve o'clock, it was heartwarming to see, uh, people out enjoying the beach strand again. And, um, the big question is, uh, what changes to, uh, make our island more friendly to other people and other situations? When, when is that gonna happen? Well, right now, we still don't know what the governor's gonna do about his stay-at-home policy. My understanding is that there are places in North Carolina that the hotspots, um, are going to peak, uh, later on in the next few weeks, which makes me feel like that we might be sitting here a few more weeks, uh, without being open to rentals. Um, that call will come probably immediately following the leaders in Raleigh, uh, what they dictate, the help to people and, and the governor and the staff and so forth. Um, we all want to get back to normalcy, no one more than me. And, um, I just appreciate the tolerance that people have shown and appreciate the criticisms, and I have received a lot of them. And I have received them in the spirit, I'm sure, which they were given, which was intent to improve the citizens' living standards and our conditions here in Holden Beach. So thank you all for your comments, those that have been supportive and those that are suggesting ways to make things better. We will take all of those comments and all that input and trying to move forward and do the best we can. Um, and may I also say that, uh, the commissioners and staff seem to be running pretty much, um, in unison with, uh, the things that we have done. And I hope we can continue that, uh, relationship through the next few weeks as we look forward to seeing an end to come to this situation, the virus. So with that, Mr. Mayor, Pro-Ten, Mr. Brown, what would you like to say tonight?
I just, uh, a lot like you, Alan, I feel like people have been pretty considerate all said and done. We, we, uh, you, you have a little, you're gonna catch it here and there from some and, and that's just, that's the job, okay? But, uh, at the rate we're going, we, we want to be safe above all else. Uh, I have some really good friends that are in the rental business, okay? And, and, uh, you know, I took a pretty good lashing there a couple of weeks ago and, and, and that's okay. Because at the end of the conversation, we were still friends. You know, and I said, I, I explained to him, I said, "This is nothing personal here, bro." I said, "You know, we, we understand everything. We understand about the pocketbooks, we understand about life." And I said, "We, we've got to stay focused on life right now." And, uh, and I would love to be able to go and sit in a restaurant somewhere, but it may be a while yet. So I have to accept that, you know, and that's fine for the good of the people. And that's why we're here. We're here to serve the good of the people. And that's the way we want to stay, okay? So let, let's stay together and, uh, let's don't make any real crazy drastic changes. You know, we don't want to fly, fly off the wrong way. And, and, uh, let's stay together, stay the course, and, and we'll be fine, okay? However it works, it's gonna work out. So, well, let's just stay the course and, and, and continue as we go.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, Mr. Tanner?
First of all, I want to thank the town staff. I know they've been working particularly very hard over the last couple of weeks as we've thrown new things at them, like closing the beach, and then they figured it, then figured out how to enforce it. So, uh, I want to thank the town staff and all you've been doing. And we, unfortunately, we still gonna have to probably deal with this for another two to four weeks before it gets better. Uh, but once again, thank y'all very much for that. I too have received a ton of emails, uh, calls, texts. I've got four or five new friends that I've been on the phone with for a while. Uh, when they've called me and I've enjoyed these conversations. Nobody has been really particularly ugly, as Mr. Brown said. Uh, and I appreciate it, the conversations with them and, and, you know, most of the times, people were very friendly. And I, once again, I just appreciate the, the feedback and I want to encourage folks to give us their feedback. Uh, need to, need to kind of dole it out, uh, over time. You know, don't, uh, don't just send us a hundred emails on the same day. But, uh, once again, I, I appreciate the feedback. I've got everybody in the input and the cooperation that everybody's shown and, and, uh, Christie don't think to say, "If we got forty million dollars outstanding, you better be working ten hours a day at least." Thank you.
Mr. Murdoch.
First off, I want to thank you, Alan, for the, I know you bore the brunt of this whole thing and, uh, I think we've all tried to stand behind you on the decisions that you made. And I'm quite glad you accidentally throw it back in our laps at, at many points of this venture. The town staff's been great, um, keeping this place open. I mean, there were days that, that we actually didn't know if we were gonna be able to do that or not. Um, Tim doing building inspections and continuing the, what little economy that we still actually have left here to, to get some work done. And, uh, you guys still show up to work every day, although it's not normalcy by any means. Um, to the residents and the property owners of this island and the, and the general public as well, I pray that this ends quickly. Um, you guys are in my thoughts and my prayers every day. I wish I could fix it. Every one of us sitting up here wishes we could fix it and could make it go away right now. And, um, I want you each and every one of you to know that I, I feel your pain. I will listen to you complain, I'll listen to you pat us on the back and, um, just keep it coming and bear with us, 'cause none of us want to do this and, um, make these decisions. So I hope and pray that in the, in the short weeks to come, that this will end and we can all get back to some normalcy around here. But again, I want to thank you all for your patience, um, while we've pushed through this.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Sullivan.
I, I don't think I have anything to add to what the four people before me said. I appreciate all the hard work that the, the town staff has done and I appreciate the, uh, cooperation we've had from the people, the visitors and the, uh, and the residents of Holden Beach. I walk every day on the sidewalk and, uh, I, I don't see, I didn't see any problem when the beach strand was closed. People were very considerate of one another. And, uh, I love the beach as much or more than most, but I, you know, we, we had to live without it for a while and now we can live with it. The one thing I, I'd like to point out, if people aren't aware, if you look at th, this month's, uh, water bill, that if you really have a problem paying your bills, there's gonna be no penalty and they're not gonna, the town is not going to stop service if, if you don't pay your bills. So if, if you have a problem, we'd appreciate if you did pay your bill, but if you have a problem, don't, don't be concerned about it because you, you have some grace period there.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan, Ms. Pat.
Yeah, I want to echo everybody's appreciation of the patience that people have shown. I mean, on the whole, I was really pleased at how, through Brunswick County and all the beaches, I think everybody's, everybody's messages to the owners to, you know, please stay home for the holiday, um, let's get on top of this. It was, it was not a normal Easter. We did not have that many people come. And ninety-five percent of the people on the island were staying off the beach. People who were going on the beach, at least were moving on the beach, but on the whole, I think there was really good cooperation. I hope that this is gonna be behind us soon. All I can say is, if we're gonna see a repeat in the fall, we've certainly had a lot of experience now in what to look for and different steps that we can take as necessary. So all we have to do is watch how this develops and hopefully goes down and hopefully doesn't come back up. But we all certainly have built experience if we have to do some things again.
Thank you, Ms. Pat. We'll turn the page on the agenda to number fifteen. Uh, consideration of executive session, Madam Clerk.
Executive session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 14331811A6 to discuss a personnel matter.
All right, is there a motion, Ms. Pat?
I move that we go into a executive session, close session pursuant to the rules of North Carolina NCGS 14331811A6.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Murdoch seconded it. And all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Close say no, it's unanimous that we go into executive session. And Madam Clerk, are we gonna stay in this room?
Yes, sir.
Okay.